Appreciate everybody logging on and being here in person. We're going to start off by conducting a roll call. Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner. You're on mute.
Present.
Commissioner Sana Gregory.
I am here.
Commissioner Gail Hambrick.
Present.
All commissioners are present and accounted for. Our first item for this evening is to consider their preliminary items for our next BOC meeting. Does any commissioner like to discuss any item that's listed on our preliminary agenda for next week?
Is it pretty much complete, Mr. Chair? Or is there something else that will be added?
As always, possibility, our meeting is tomorrow at 2:00. So if it's an emergency item, then something else will be added. But right now, I could say, to the best of my knowledge, it is complete. All right, here and now, we'll move on to next. Our first work session discussion item is a status update. Presentation by Charlotte Dupree, Southern Regional Hospital. Ms. Dupree is here. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Chairman Turner and...
Just state your name again.
Oh, I'm Charlotte Dupree. Can I take this off?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Charlotte Dupree, the president and CEO for Southern Regional Medical Center. So Chairman Turner, Commissioner Warner, Commissioner Davis, nice to see you. Commissioner Singleton Gregory and Commissioner Hambrick, thank you very much for having me here today. This is a presentation of, number one, we've come a long way. But where are we now? We've, where we've been, where we are, and where do we need to go? So our beginning with Prime Healthcare, I'm going to do like this because we need to move to the next slide. Oh, is it me?
Yes, you can control that.
Sorry. So I'm going to top one? This one? Okay. There you go. All right. So in our beginning, Southern Regional, all of you know, was a county-owned hospital, opened in 1971 as a small community hospital. A lot happened over those times, that time that this hospital was owned by the county. And y'all had different groups who, in fact, managed your hospital. The last four years, you were, it was managed by Emory. And this hospital was going, good to go through bankruptcy. Two weeks before it filed bankruptcy, Prime came in. They were invited to come in, look at the hospital. They saw a busy emergency department. They looked around, really didn't do a lot of due diligence, but just knew what they could always do was, in fact, they could save jobs, they could save hospitals, and they could save lives. And this was a hospital that was very needed in this community. So Prime purchased this hospital. It took about seven months because we had to apply for a new certificate of need. And so we finally, on February 1, opened the hospital. Prime is an award-winning health system that owns and operates 46 hospitals in 14 states. We are the only hospital in Georgia that they own. The closest hospital to that is in Alabama. To date, Prime has invested nearly $40 million in capital, equipment, and infrastructure in our hospital at Southern Regional to better serve the Southern Crescent community. Our care receives a lot of national recognition. I'm not going to go through all these. I will highlight on a few, as far as being a chest pain center that's accredited. We created acute care for the elderly, which is a dedicated unit. Our nurses are all taking the niche membership and have passed those courses for nurses approved in the healthcare system for elderly. We received many awards in 2019, as you can see. And also, I skipped a slide, it looks like. In 2020, we continue to receive American Hospital Association Mission Awards for quality achievement. So we're very proud of those. We performed a community needs assessment in 2016 that is mandated by CMS for all non-profit hospitals. We actually contracted out with the Coker Group at that point in time. And then we performed it again in 2019 because this is required every three years. It was very interesting because the community needs assessment identified as mental health as the number one significant issue for healthcare in Clayton County. When Dr. Prim Reddy, who's the chairman of the board and president and owner of Prime Healthcare, first came here, he had no idea that he would be focusing on psych health. So what he decided to do, though, that it was important enough because this was number one issue, in realizing that Clayton County has one mental health care provider per 1,880 mental health patients compared to Georgia, which is one in 900. If you compare it to DeKalb and Fulton, respectively, DeKalb has one provider for every 400 psych patient and 1 to 520 for Fulton for every mental health patient. As a result, Dr. Reddy was very adamant that we would help this county with the psych issues. So we acquired a certificate of need and built a $3.2 million senior behavior health unit. We opened that in February 2019. And Chairman Turner, I appreciate your attending that for our ribbon cutting and also announcing it at your annual state, the county presentation that you made. And we also, the reason it's so expensive, because it sounds like outrageously expensive for a 16-bed unit, but the state of Georgia requires us to build this as though it was an adult psych unit, that, so that there's no ligature, it's specially built, the way the ceilings are, the whole, all the infrastructure has to be built a certain way. It's a very beautiful unit. We had to hire a psychiatrist and then two psych nurse practitioners to support our inpatients that are actually admitted to the hospital and our ED psych patients, as well as cover our behavioral health unit. So we invested a lot in this particular unit, but to address the psych patients of this health, of this community. We spent a lot of money on a lot of equipment. When we first came here, the money had not been spent for 10 years in the infrastructure. We had to do caulking of the building, which cost almost a million dollars, things that you don't see. Air coolers on top of the building, new anesthesia machines. We had a whole laparoscopic equipment, all the new monitors, new beds. And then in 2020 and 2019, we continued to expand. We helped the federally qualified health center. They didn't have the capital, but they wanted to be near our hospital. So we bought a building about a mile from our, actually about a fourth of a mile from our emergency room door. And we're leasing that building back to them because we thought that was necessary for the folks of our community. Of course, we opened our senior health unit. We have two new cath labs. One is a Tissue equipment. Each of those costs about $1.2 million. The GE is being installed right now. Three new CT units. One's 128-slice. I saw it yesterday morning. It was brought into the building and be installed in a couple of weeks. A 64-slice CT for the hospital, which will be installed in January. And then a Seaman 64-slice that's going to go to Jonesboro at Spivey Station. Two new x-ray machines were located adjacent to the emergency department. And we were able to redirect a neurosurgeon, Dr. Alashabi. And he bought a building right down the street on Valley View and about a mile from the hospital, right off of Upper Riverdale Drive. And we brought in another neurosurgeon to join him. So we have a service that we have not had at this hospital. And I bring this up because that little microscope, that looks like one microscope, was a quarter of a million dollars that we had to get for this service. We've really been focused on our mother-baby unit, our NICU and our LND unit. We invested in swivel sleepers for babies. Now, this may not seem that important, but these sleepers actually come up and over the mom, so they just put the baby right in it and then swing back out. And they don't have to reach over and try to make, risk that baby falling on the floor. So we're state-of-the-art in that. And we've also developed new fetal monitor system, a new infant security system, and new ultrasound. We've created all new, we bought all-new GI scopes. It's state-of-the-art. It's exactly what Emory has, is the video endoscopy system, which is about 400,000, and much more. Every day, I'm asked to do new surgery instruments. We created a new cisto room for our urologist. So we are the only hospital in the area that has two cisto rooms, so our urologist can flip back and forth. There's some key financial changes and impacts that have taken place over the last two years. We've invested in our hospital and our people. We've had some contractual adjustments that negatively affected our net revenue. Our bad debt was, and our charity care together have created about $14 million off our, took off our net revenue. We, for the first time, gave merit increases to our employees. We thought it was best to invest in our people. So for the first time, all of our employees averaged about a 2% increase in merit increases. We, in fact, it's based on performance, so they could get anywhere from a 1 to a 4% increase, and averaged about 2%. When you look at 2%, a $70 million salaries and wages, then you're looking about another $1.4 million in salaries that we increased. In addition, we gave a market adjustment that they also had not had. We were not competitive in the market. We were losing RNs. We were losing other staff. So throughout the year, 2019, from our environmental service employees all the way to our RNs, we gave salary adjustments. Some RNs got $8 because of internal equity situations that they had gotten, not had merits, but yet we were hiring newer RNs into the hospital that didn't have the same amount of experience for making more money than those who had been there for a long time. So it took quite a while, but we spent $4 million. So if you look at for the employees, it was $6 million. In addition, we had an ED group that managed our emergency department. And what we did was have to deal with the situation that that ED group went bankrupt. So we did not know that. They had the ED providers, which are nurse practitioners, PAs, and MDs, all had to, they worked six weeks, but it was time to pay them. They went bankrupt, and those providers were not paid. We, though, in fact, had paid the company to pay them. But when they went bankrupt, that money was gone, as well as our providers were left out without pay. So immediately, I called Dr. Reddy, called my boss, Harsh, and we got on the phone and said, what's the right thing to do is to pay those providers. So that's about $500,000 a month that we paid them. So that's about $750,000 that we paid, something we'd already paid for the company. And also, it takes time to get these patient, these providers on insurance, as credential and insurance companies. So we went about five months without any revenue. So that in addition cost us, and we did it because it was important for the community to have the same doctors who are familiar with this and try to go until we could find the right emergency group, which actually we contracted with this August, Envision Healthcare. And they are handling our emergency department now. But we ate that expense. And then 2020 happens, and COVID-19 pandemic hits. So we had to look at this. So we had our first patient in March, March 21. And we actually, just like every other hospital, had to be fluid from day to day. What do we do? How do we handle this? And so we did not make any difference in our employee status until May. But in May, it came time that we had to right-size. Our volume took a dive. Our elderly people, for sure, were not coming to the ED. Outpatient surgery stopped. We only did emergent and urgent care at the hospital. After May passed, in May and June, we decided we had to furlough 52 people. We did that for two months. Actually, it was to the advantage of some people. They got more money. Some of our lower service folks actually made money with the stipend that was paid from the federal government. But after those two months, we realized the volume was not increasing as rapidly as we needed it to. So we did a reduction in force of 18, what we call not essential staff for the care of patients. We kept all of our RNs, except those who may have been staff RNs that weren't directly involved in patient care. We flexed our staff. We flexed our managers. We flexed our leadership. We continue to do that to this day, just like every other hospital nationwide is doing. In fact, I just read yesterday, one of the hospitals in the Northeast laid off 900 employees. So it's, it's something that you have to adjust. The one thing about this hospital is that we have great leadership. I finally have my COO. It took three years, but I've been here four and a half years. And I was able to get a chief operating officer, which helped me tremendously. I have the right CNO now, and we have the right CFO right now. So I think as a C-suite, the administrative team, we have the right leadership. We know how to manage hospitals. We know what to do. We know that we have to tighten up and cut corners and do the right thing. Sometimes it's very difficult, especially when you're furloughing or you're having to do a reduction in workforce. We also reviewed all of our contracts that we had with our employed doctors, but also with those who are hospital-based providers. Antesthesia, we asked them to furlough because we didn't have as many surgeries, which cost us less money to have to subsidize them. We did the same thing with radiology, and we did the same thing with pathology. So it's one of those things that we're all faced with. So I want to show you how this works. When you look at our hospital, in 2016, January of 2016, your hospital lost $2.6 billion in that one month of January before we bought that hospital. In one month, $2.6 billion. In February 1, when we bought that hospital, we had to take a little dive because you can't just pull up immediately. So in January, February, and March, we were taking that dive. In April, we broke even. Like I said, we know how to run hospitals. We know how to tighten up. We know what to do. And we broke even. And then, all of a sudden, we started going up. So 2017, our net revenue started increasing. 2018, you can see that we made, and this is in millions, $158 million in collected revenue. So net revenue means, how much do you collect? So we collected $158 million. Now go to the other side, the green, and look at 2018. This is your cash flow. This is your net income. In other words, once you receive your net patient revenue, collect money, then you subtract all your expenses. Salaries and wages are 50, about 50% on the average. In 2018, we were 45% of net revenue, exactly where we need to be. 2018 was the ideal year for this hospital. And so you'll see our wages and salaries in the yellow for 2018. And again, our net operating income, just in two, two years, we, in fact, were now making 18, our cash flow was $18.6 billion. Now, that's good for bottom line. 2019, our net revenue decreased. It decreased for several reasons. And one that we had, as I mentioned before, we had bad debt. We had charity care that was about $16 million. But also, we invested a lot of money. So when you look at our net operating income, you see that dive right there from $18.6 to about $7 million. And that was still okay because we invested in the doctors. We were bringing on new doctors. We employed two general surgeons. We employed an orthopod. We were bringing more services to the hospital. It cost a lot of money. And then, of course, we ate the expense that we had for the ED doctors. But this was fine. We were actually a star, no matter what, as far as Prime was concerned, even though we took this dive, it was the right thing to do because we had to invest. And sometimes you need to take the dive, and then you pull up before you crash and burn as you, as you invest money. Because the more money you spend, the more money you can make. And so we had done well, and we knew what we could do. Unfortunately, COVID hit. Also, let me mention something else about 2019. When you look at debt patient revenue, which is the blue, that's when Kaiser contracted with Emory. Kaiser, we did not have a contract with, but Kaiser came, patients came to our emergency department, and we were paid well. When Kaiser affiliated with Emory, it made all the difference in the world in our net revenue, the collections there, because we lost all those patients. So a lot of things were affecting us. In 2020, you can see the dive that we took. And this was because our volume decreased. So immediately, our collections decreased. So we had to act accordingly. So you see our net income also took a dive because we didn't have the same type of collections. And our expenses, we had to manage the expenses. And you'll see the yellow taking a dive because, in fact, of all the changes that I explained on salaries and dollars, everybody flexing, we're not doing, we're not paying overtime, which normally is about $17,000 a week. So it's, it's a lot of things that we did to manage that hospital. We've had some continued success. Cigna contract, we secured this year in June. Aetna, we are working with. We hope to have that finalized by the end of December. And Humana has finally come back to the table. Those are three companies that we did not have contracts with, which has been very difficult. But when the patient comes to the ED, we have to get authorization so we can still handle it during emergency situations. Our challenges now are the growing number of uninsured patients in our community. It continues, as y'all know probably, people who've become unemployed, and it's continuing. The uninsured patients, people who didn't have insurance, and now people who are losing their insurance. Self-paid patients, 40% of the patients who come in our ED are self-paid. And of our inpatients, 17% of our inpatients are self-paid. Many require heart catheterizations, surgeries. People do not want to come to the hospital right now. It's very threatening for the Medicare people, especially our vulnerable patients, to come to our hospital. But these are emergent situations that we're spending an awful lot of money on for our ED and our inpatients because of the fact that they have no insurance. And it's required that we have them in our hospital, and we want to take care of them. Another issue is psych patients. Psych patients are held in our emergency department. And we have a lot of psych patients. Our average length of stay is 3.6. When I came in this morning, our main ED, which is a 26-bed ED, we had 18 patients who were psych patients in my main ED being held. Now, think of those beds, too. 26 beds, 18 are being held with psych patients who need to be transferred to either beds that are contracted by the state for DBHDD, or they have to go to the regional psych hospital. So it takes up most of our main ED beds. For y'all, if y'all have an emergency, we want to get you in, we want to treat you. But it's taking up a lot of beds. So our ED nurse turnover, due to the challenging behavioral environment, and these are some violent patients that come in. These are not patients with just minor situations. Some of them are very dangerous. We've had nurses hurt. We've had doctors punched. We've had nurses punched. We've had to call the police on several of them. We've had many of them run out and escape. Some of them stealing vehicles, some of them breaking glass. So it's not a very good environment. And therefore, our community image is continued to not be what we want it to be. Our HCAPs, which are the scores that are required by CMS, that you call the patients to see how their inpatient stay was, is very good, except when it comes to the overall rating. How would you rate this hospital on a scale of 0 to 10? They'll do a 7 or 8. Whereas the inpatient scores will be a 9 or a 10. The reason is, is because 70% of our patients come through the ED. And what do you remember? You remember that stay in the ED. So they'll give it a 7 or 8. But guess what? We are only, yet, we only win by getting a 9 or 10. So it counts down. It's in the red. It's negative. It's a negative if you get 7 or 8. So we are unable, at this point in time, to remodel our main ED, which has been a wish of mine for the past five years, due to the number of psych holes. It's impossible. We have increased wait times, length of stay, due to lack of bed availability in the main ED. Therefore, we continue not to have the image that we want to have in this area. Over 40% of our patients, as I mentioned, are self-paid. We're trending over 20,000 uncompensated ED visits a year. 60% of our uninsured patients are Clayton County residents. Our annual cost of treating uninsured Clayton County residents in our emergency department only, these are people who are not admitted but being treated in the ED, is $3.6 million. That's for annual cost. That's not our charges, that's our cost. Our payer mix, you'll see on this one, we have decreased from 20,000 visits a year to about 16,000. That's because COVID, we don't have as many people coming through the ED. The cost of treatment for our inpatient has also increased, that our psychiatric patients with medical issues. Psychiatric patients with medical issues have to come into the hospital as an inpatient. Some of these are overdose. They have to be treated. They're medically unstable, so they can't just automatically be treated, be sent to a psych facility if they have a health problem. Some of them are self-imposed wounds, knife wounds, it could be. And some of them are just really sick patients who have psych issues, too. And we've had to perform surgery on them also. So we have increased from 2019 to 2020, our inpatient psychiatric visits for medical issues have increased 32%. We're averaging the cost of treating uninsured patients just in the ED, $1.5 million. Our average, we have 3,000 psych holes per year of psych hold, days, I'm sorry, per year. And that cost about $1.03 million. Our geriatric psych unit, which I want to talk about real quickly, because you'd think, you built this unit, are you making money? Well, the first year, you don't make money in a unit. Second year, we started making money. But then, again, in 2020, we're annualizing that because of decline of Medicare patients wanting to come to our hospital. That is probably about half of what it should be. When we first decided to do this, we said our return on investment would be six years and two months. Now, Prime doesn't normally do this. When they're investing in a, you know, any type of program that we come up with, they want a two-year return on their investment. Five at the max. And that would be me begging. Okay? So we thought this one, for sure, we had 6.2, two months, six years and two months. They approved it because of this community. They would normally never approve that because it was number one in our community assessment that this community needed. They approved it. So what we have is overall hospital uncompensated care. This is unreimbursed, uncompensated care has increased 76% from $15 million in 2018, when we were still doing well. But now, in 2019, total unreimbursed uncompensated care increased 76%. And I don't know what it's going to be in 2020. So where do we go from here? So my idea was, we need to have our psych patients out of the main ED. So we have an area, and that is to furnish and staff a 12-bed psych transitional unit. And this is page 14. I think if we turn to page 16, if you have this on a handout, and I'll show you in a second. Let me just show you right now. So if you look, does this have a pointer on it? At the top? Okay. So if you look down here, that's the entrance to our ED. This is the area, the blue area, is where we're holding all our psych patients, which is, in fact, this is our main ED. This is our fast track here. So this is our main ED. These were, we're holding our psych patients, where they run out the door. We don't restrain very many of them. We have people who are watching them, but they take off. What I'm looking at is this area up here, which is a 12-bed psych unit. This is it blown up over here on the right, which, in fact, is an area that is in and of itself contained. You would put a nurse, a psych nurse practitioner, you would put two psych mental health technicians and a security officer who would sit right there. Those two rooms right there are padded rooms. You have a shower for the patients. You have a bathroom for the patient, and a bathroom and a shower also. And then you have these beds over here in the nurses' station. So ideally, this was the plan to do this. And, but, we're looking at capital that Prime, at this point in time, because they have 45 hospitals, are not, at this point in time, going to be able to invest and give us more money for this year because, or I'm not sure about next year either, because we're still putting in the cath... not sure about next year either, because we're still putting in the cath lab and we've invested all those millions of dollars. So Prime, I want to tell you right now, is not going to let Southern Regional go bankrupt. They're not, that's not going to happen, so I don't want anybody fearing that. It's not going to go bankrupt. But as a CEO, what do I have to do? I have to manage this appropriately. That's the only way to do it, you've got to manage it. So we would not have this transitional unit. Our goal though, is to gain your support for the twelve-bed psych transitional unit with appropriate staffing. I'd like to gain some type of financial assistance with our uninsured Clayton County patients and gain support for the ED remodel. Our contingency plan is what I'm going to have to continue doing right now, is rightsizing and assess the services that we currently have being offered. What do we keep? What do we not keep? We cannot maintain this way. We're not going to let this hospital crash and burn. Okay? We're taking the dive, but we're not going to crash and burn. We've got to pull up. Before, they weren't able to pull up and they crashed and burned. This is not going to happen. Whether we get the, so our only options are at this point in time is to get some help at like Clayton County, to, I'm asking you as a CEO of this hospital to help us to take care of these psych patients and these uninsured patients that we have and that we in fact can move on and grow and continue the way we were, because, because we can do this. We can. We absolutely are able to grow, continue recruiting doctors. I have another general surgeon at OrthPod that I've just interviewed this past week, and continue to develop new programs. Would love to have a neuroendovascular program for calling of the aneurysms. This hospital can be what it needs to be, what it used to be called, the baby Grady, I guess. But Grady is supported by DeKalb and Fulton County, and that's how they survive. Right now, I need to manage, and that's what I'm being charged with with my company, to manage this hospital correctly, and that's what I have to do. It's a business, I have to run it that way. I just don't, it just breaks my heart to have to lay more people off, do reduction or force, as we call it, and also downsize some of the programs that we worked real hard on developing. So I'm asking for your help for this county, the hospital in this county, to please help us to support what we need to make this hospital what it needs to be. Thank you.
All right. We thank you for that presentation. I guess I will start off with the first question. The citizens of Clayton County just recently approved a behavioral health center, a facility. Is that, it was approved, put on the agenda for it to be approved
Right.
With the expectation that it would help mitigate some of your psych issues at the hospital?
Right.
So tell me how
So that's a crisis stabilization unit, and actually, we helped to develop that application for the county. So we worked with Dr. Adams, Dr. Lee Adams, and with the public health department and put that in, we thought it would work. My understanding is DBHDD will try to entertain that in February. I've been invested with them four times. I, they said if you will get this splash funding, if you will do this, if you will do that, we'll do, we'll help you, we'll do all the things that need to be done. The next time I go, I said, okay, we've got this funding where, for the county, not for us, but for the county to help us. And they go, well, I don't know that we can operationally fund it because we have to wait for the state to give us money. And we don't think we're going to get that money because they're cutting our budget. And Clayton County is not on our radar, that was quote unquote. They said Atlanta has some of these crisis stabilization units in DeKalb. They have several of them around Atlanta, but what their focus is on North Georgia and around Macon. So I do not see the crisis stabilization unit coming. Now, what I'm interested in though, is helping these patients. And if we have a transitional plan, and the transitional plan would be this unit that we could develop at the hospital for our patients and have that as a stepping stone until you can create either a, it's called a behavioral health crisis unit, VHCU, of which there's a less than twenty-three hour stay, but you still have to build that. We're looking at a year to probably plan it and build it. In a crisis stabilization unit, you may be looking at a year and a half to two years to do that. Right now, that doesn't resolve our problem or my problem as a CEO of a hospital. So I guess my thought is, is that monies could be used to in fact, as a transitional plan, to help, because if we're developed, we're all doing the same thing, is treating the same patients. We're treating the mental health patients, transition these patients to the crisis stabilization unit.
And I'm sure that you have looked at our options in terms of federal, state funding
We have, we have. Actually, the federal, federal, feds, when you looked at that net revenue for two thousand and twenty, that included seven million dollars that we got from the feds. If we had not got that money, we'd be in the red.
Any other commissioner have any questions?
Is that funding you receive based off of Indian care?
Um, actually, it's planned on COVID nineteen, that you got so much money, yes.
And the funding you're seeking, is this recurring or one-time funding?
No, I'm looking at one-time funding. I'm looking at funding one time. I would like to ask, if I could, again, it'll help me to pull up and stabilize, and what I'm looking at, if I can get those psych patients out of that ED, then what will happen is that I think the whole image of the hospital will change. And that's what's important, because right now, people are afraid to come to our hospital. And they, I can't, I can't change this image overnight. Didn't happen overnight, but I think we could certainly publicize it, and that way, they're not afraid to come to our hospital, they're not saying no. So I think it's very important that we could remodel them and do what we need to do to this ED to make it look like a great ED that people can walk into and feel comfortable in.
But your proposal, the way you, you take care of the psych patients is, your proposed build-out
Yes, the build-out of
Stabilization
Right. Um, it wouldn't be called a crisis stabilization, it'd be a psych transitional unit. If I do a crisis stabilization unit, every other hospital in the state could send you to a board and every other, it wouldn't just be this county. They'd be pushing patients from every other county into this, into this hospital.
I'm glad to hear you say that. Somebody else is talking?
No, go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay. Hey, Mr. Dupree, first of all, thank you so very much for your presentation. You all have worked diligently. Thanks to Mr. Chairman, many years ago, I was on the board of a hospital when we went through that bankruptcy period. And there was, were very difficult times, and as you've explained to us, we're still in difficult times. I think you've answered one of my questions, but I just want to make sure I hear you correctly. What do you feel the average stay would be within the crisis stabilization unit? I think you said twenty-three hours? Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
In a crisis stabilization unit that is being built, it's days, okay?
It's days, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
In the crisis stabilization unit, in the unit, the transitional unit that I am interested in developing, it's going to be, it could be three, three days until we get on the board and get them out to another facility for psych. We're a non-acute care psych facility, so it's still be the three days, but they're in another area, they're out of my ED, they're adjacent to the ED for their safety. They're going to be the safer place, but my ED doctors can respond to them quickly.
Okay, wonderful. And the other question I have, I heard you address some of it with the changes with Kaiser and Emory. One of the things that I've noticed is not just the data that you presented to us about the uninsured, but for those that are insured, we're just not coming to Southern Regional. So what are the plans to be able to help turn that around? Because as we know, a lot of your funding that will help you all stay in the black and not be in the red is these elective surgeries and trying to get those back from the books.
Yeah.
So do we have any plans for that? Are you just focusing on this psych build-out first and foremost, hoping, as you said, it would relieve some of that? Do we have plans for that?
In conversations with my doctors and, and all the physicians, the cardiologists, the GI doctors, the urologists, is that they want to, I mean, they're there at the hospital, they, they have to, they're fixing to grow, but in fact, they want to make sure the care is great. They worry about the ED. A lot of their patients come through the ED. So that's what the issue is, you know, that
For elective surgeries, they're coming through the ED?
No, no.
I'm sorry.
No, no, for other surgeries, other types of surgeries that come in through the ED.
Okay, and so
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
Okay. The reason I say that is because we know Southern Regional at one point was well-known for having great doctors having residency there to be able to have elective surgeries.
Right.
So what I'm seeing is, this is a great opportunity for us to help our community with mental health, that is needed. But it seems like the same problem persists however, is that trying to get those in our community that are insured not to bypass Southern Regional and go to the Piedmonts or the Emorys
Correct.
But be able to have those elective surgeries there, so then it begins to bring that balance with the uninsured and the insured.
I, I agree with you, and we have actually excellent outpatient services, outpatient surgery, and we're, like I, it's like the neurosurgeons coming, they're going to be doing some outpatient spine surgeries. And I have my cardiologists who are performing, and interventional radiologists who are all outpatient. My vascular surgeons have inpatient and outpatient, my urology is predominantly outpatient. So I have, it's a great, we have great actually outpatient services at our hospital, so I'm very pleased with that.
Okay. Well, I'd love to have an offline conversation because today, we got inundated with all the uninsured.
Yes.
So I really want to see the growth
I love it.
Um, that you all are experiencing.
That's my forte.
I love it.
Okay, that's what I, that's why I'm there, to grow that hospital, okay?
Awesome.
So that's why I'm there. So that's what I want to do. So I love it. That's what, um, that's what I'm there, that's why they put me there, to grow this hospital.
Yeah, because many of our, I get a lot of calls about folks having to truck out of the county for specialty treatments such as cancer treatment, sickle cell treatment. So again, I look forward to our offline conversation.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Commissioner Gregory?
Yes, sir. Um, hey, Charlotte, it's Sunny. Are the psych patients, are they like people bringing them in, are law enforcement bringing them in, are they coming from the jail? Where are they coming?
All, all the above. They, Landry has, has had his, you want to say, you want to speak to that?
Chief, you got something there?
You bring a lot of them in, Landry, so.
Yes, ma'am. So I, I think I can go back and help Commissioner Warner a little bit too. So here's, here's a little bit of how this problem backfeeds out into the community. Okay? So it starts with the psych patients. So many of times what's happening, what Commissioner Warner's referring to, while many of our paying patients wind up at Piedmont Fayette, Piedmont Henry, it becomes a capacity issue. So the psych patients, you know, probably seventy-five to eighty percent of Southern Regional's ED patient load comes from our service. We're their number one patient provider through the ED, so we feel the same pain that, that Charlotte feels in the ED. Going back, I was on that initial board with Commissioner Warner and Ms. Bivins before the hospital went bankrupt, and I've continued to serve. I think when Prime took over, it was me and Charlotte was the board
That's right.
Um, of the hospital. So we just made a lot of decisions very quick to get this hospital running. But what's happening is, as Southern Regional continues to have increasing levels of psych holes, that's fewer beds for us to take the paying patients of the, of the county. Those patients wind up in other facilities, not by choice, but by necessity. So if the hospital can't clear the psych patients out of the ED beds, clear up space for those paying patients to come, my service is forced to then take them to another location. They either go to Piedmont Henry, goes to Piedmont Fayette, many of them go downtown. So what's happening is, we're leaking that revenue to our other local hospitals around that are investing tens of millions. You look at the recent ED additions at Piedmont Henry, you look at the recent ED additions at Piedmont Fayette, their capacity is doubling and tripling. So because they have those, those other units where they can shift that patient load. So what happens on the streets of Clayton County is, now my units are forced to go out of the county. So we're spending a lot of our time in Henry and Fayette, downtown at Grady, which is taking more units out of Clayton County, which is slowing down our ability to turn and flip patients. So what seems to be a small isolated psych unit problem is a much bigger systemic problem when you look at the effects of emergency response. It's affecting law enforcement as well. Chief Roberts can tell you, as, as we start looking for areas to take psych patients, it's not uncommon for our guys to call four or five hospitals and they say, yeah, no, we can't take them. Well, that's a patient that we obviously have to take somewhere, so we wind up driving around trying to find a facility. Law enforcement winds up driving around trying to find a facility. That's hurting law enforcement response time, it's hurting EMS response time. So it seems like a small isolated problem, but when you look at the downstream effects of how it affects my service, Chief Roberts' service, to answer Commissioner Gregory's question, how are they getting to Southern Regional? We bring them, law enforcement brings them, they get kicked out of the car on the ramp at all hours of the night, they walk in to the door, so they're coming from all over the place. We bring a lot of them in, and when we, we pick up a lot from Southern Regional and we take them to other facilities. So it's a problem that everybody is having. The benefit other facilities have is they have somewhere to hold them where it does not affect the ED. We don't have that luxury. So when we get seventeen psych holes on a Saturday evening, that means those trauma patients, those sick patients, those insured patients are going downtown, or they're going to Fayette or Henry. So hopefully that helps.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Did I answer your question, Commissioner Gregory?
It did, it did, and I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know Ms. Ample, our director of HR, just went through a lot of negotiating, you know, with our benefits and so forth, and I'm kind of wondering, you know, during the presentation, Mr. Dupree mentioned about Kaiser, you know, when Kaiser went over with Emory and so forth, and I know we can't make Kaiser do whatever, but I just wonder if that could be, you know, could be some of our negotiations as we move forward, you know, as a county, to help our businesses that are here. I, I'll give you another example. I know we changed our vision insurance a year ago. I used to go to Clayton Center, now I got to go to America's Best. I think they had two hundred fifty dollars there at America's Best, and that's what they want. But here we are, we, you know, if, if we're going to, if we had, you know, maybe a thousand employees that could use Clayton Center to keep them operating in county and keep them flourishing, in the same way with Southern Regional, if we, you know, just had that ability for Kaiser to take more of our patients or look at more of our people. She said she was negotiating with Aetna.
Humana, Aetna, Humana, yeah. And we do have Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah, and so, you know, some of these, you know, we can help ourselves here in the county, and I don't know, I'm just, I'm asking that question, and yeah, I don't expect the answer right now, but that, if that is something that could be part of our negotiation with those consultants next year, and they try to help us out a little bit or whatever. I know Kaiser has his own little, you know, kind of in-house hospital and so forth. But just, just questioning how, you know, we can help as a county to, you know, to help out with more of our businesses, not just Southern Regional right now, and we're focused on Southern Regional, but with these other services when we have to use consultants and so forth.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a next one. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner, I can't.
Commissioner Hambrich, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Dupree, this is Commissioner Hambrich, and
How are you?
You mentioned the financials of Southern Regional and how the county can help out. And I was on the board when the change was made with Southern Regional where Prime brought out and we said, oh, you know, it was a good thing that the county would no longer be obligated to, you know, to hold up, you know, the hospital.
Correct.
And that was a big deal for us.
Correct.
So what I would like to see, and you may have mentioned this in your presentation, but is there some way that talks can be held with Emory or with Piedmont or with some other entity?
I've actually, I've, I'm good friends with Lily, who is the CEO over at Piedmont Henry. I have met with Dane Peterson, with my CMO. Emory, like they said, they managed this hospital for five years. They have their own agenda. I am talking to another group that is not competitive, and actually, we're looking at a cancer program. I can't give it away, you may have figured it out already, but I am talking to them about joint venturing I am talking to them, uh, about joint venturing with radiation therapy and doing some things with the cancer program down here in the south side, uh, because we're not competitors, um, so I'm out there talking and visiting and looking at these things, um, I just, um, right now, they're looking at my scores for quality, and they're being brought down because of my situation with the psych patients, so, uh, we have great quality inside this hospital, great quality of care, um, and, uh, we are very proud of what we do inside this hospital regarding infection control management, regarding, um, our nursing staff on the units, uh, the great experiences that patients have, the Z D is another issue.
Hello, hey, real quick, I'm, I'm hoping that this won't be the end of our conversation because, um, I know we can't stay here all evening, um, first of all, Dr. Kevin Carson said hello to you.
Oh, thank you.
And also, you know, he's a very good friend of mine, um, as well as many of the other docs, and the reason I mentioned him is because there are doctors who could have left our county, and they did not, they remained here, and they're still a part of the county.
That's right.
And so what I'd like for us to do, Mr. Chairman, as we continue this conversation, is make sure that we, as I always ask, have a comprehensive conversation, even with those providers who have stayed in our county, who have built in our county, not the ones that were providing service and building our boats, but then had offices in other counties, but there are those docs who have been here and invested, and I'd like for us to come together and see how we can help you all at Southern Regional, but make sure that we have a holistic and comprehensive conversation, because I thank Chief for what he stated, but I know for a fact, because I got four patients at my house, that unfortunately, a lot of times, we have to bypass Southern Regional, number one, there are no children's beds for our kids, we have a large population of children unless you own added children's beds.
No, we only do, we only do pediatric surgery for, we have a pediatric surgeon, but we do not have children's beds.
Right, and so with us being heavily populated, we have to truck those kids somewhere else from the state, the other thing I noticed, one of my, um, pediatric docs in the county just mentioned to me too, that they, as mentioned earlier, the health insurance that's accepted and other folks that stated has been something that has been a concern, so I'll look forward again to having a deep dive and out of surface conversation, and really seeing these numbers reflected to where it's not just of the uninsured, but let's talk about those in our county that are insured, how we're going to attract them to come into the hospital, so I, I'm grateful, and I'm glad about this psych unit.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir, I, I did want to mention, we, you know, we always in school, we always say, don't leave the parent with just the negative, so Charlotte, I know COVID hit everybody, and the last time I visited, you know, Southern Regional, it was great, it was before COVID, where, you know, you offered the, um, valet parking and so forth, just to kind of build things up, and I know now you can't do a lot of things with the volunteers coming in and just, uh, you know, that gives people community pride, because I always have people ask me, what can I do to volunteer in the county?
Correct.
And, um, unfortunately, I have to see a lot of doctors all the time, and, and I do see a lot of volunteers, and it, it's just awesome service, so I just wanted to compliment you on where you were going before this COVID hit and, um, kind of knocked things out.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it, thank you, Sunny.
All right, any other questions?
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Yes, and I will just add right briefly that, yes, the mental health situation in psych patients is real at the hospital.
Yeah.
I was there, what, last, about two or three weeks ago?
Yes.
And going through the emergency room, I saw several patients that were in need of psychiatric care, so, yeah, something that we definitely need to Commissioner Franklin Warner's support.
It's an impression that, it's not an impression that we want to our community to visit daily, uh, when they come to our hospital, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Mr. Prey, he still has a skill set, he's a previous chief of police, unique security protection.
Call on me while I'm there, we'll take care of it, ah, Commissioner.
Thank y'all so much, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, let's go, uh, to designated truck routes, Mr. Matarco.
I know, I know, you don't have to say it, I got you.
Good evening, Mr. Matarco, glad you could be here.
Yes, sir.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Uh, obviously, we're here to talk about designated truck routes, it's something that the county does not have, um, obviously, I'm sure each commissioner and other members of our staff have learned over the years, it's a popular thing in our community, that people want no truck signs, um, so tonight is a proposal, if we want to consider trying to move a way into the realm of, um, limiting trucks in certain areas as designating roads where they need to be, um, I gave a quick overview, um, why, why is this an issue, obviously, community concerns, um, we can speak all during the night about community and what they want to see and what they don't want to see, um, I've got issues with road design, obviously, asphalt thickness, um, you can go on certain roads and you can see where trucks run all over the corners as they turn, um, congestion, driver's behavior, expectations, you don't expect to see a tractor trailer come down your subdivision street at times. Um, one of the things is a newfound phenomenon, at least in the technology age, the Google and the Waze, um, giving direction on how you're going to get from to or from, and some of that is dynamic direction based off of congestion, and I know I've used that over the years, and I go through subdivisions this way, that way, trying to get to my designation, um, and that's just a factor of life we live with, um, we have, um, various no truck signs around the county, um, some of them probably dating thirty, forty years old ago, um, there are certain roads here or there, but it's a, it's not comprehensive, um, it's really inconsistent in application, it was just a knee-jerk thing here or there, and it's not looking at, um, holistically, um, and this is a common complaint, obviously, that my department receives a lot of, and I'm sure Chief Roberts would tell you, his department receives a lot of, so, um, what we've come up with, uh, kind of three-pronged approach, the engineering side, of course, the legal side, and the enforcement side, um, our departments got together and came up with what can we do, and actually, not to try to reinvent this situation, excuse me, Gwinnett County has an ordinance on their books, that's the one we could find, this is a map taken off their website on how they identify truck routes in the county, state roads, um, county roads, and actually some city streets too, within their county where they said, um, trucks can go, the, one note I will give you on this is I sent, I mentioned some of the city routes, um, they have a different service delivery arrangement than we do in our county, they have actual, through their agreement, they maintain some of the roads when they go in the city limits, and as you know, we do not, when it goes, when a road goes in the city, it's the city's, so when you see, look at their map, you can kind of see how some of their, all their lines kind of connect or have a destination or it makes sense, but we, we took this as a starting point on where to start with, so, as I said, modeled after Gwinnett's County, um, the idea is to have a similar map posted on our county's website, um, the actual list of roads that they have in their ordinance is pretty simplistic, name of road, essentially a beginning and end, a to and from, these are the routes that we designate trucks can go on, uh, one of the key factors, and this kind of gets knee-deep into state law about how you define truck route, heavy trucks and gross vehicle weight ratios, is, um, they use thirty-six thousand pounds, and I'll get to what thirty-six thousand pounds actually means in a minute, um, and they also give allowance if you have business off of a designated route, um, you have an allowance to go pick up or deliver your goods and, and do your commerce or you need, um, a lot of the trucking facilities we might have are not going to be located on a route, um, that we consider for designation, but that doesn't mean they can't function, they still have, uh, an origin or a destination on a, a side road, and all that means is they can get there and they can leave there, it's just you can't go every which way through the county to get there, you have to stick to the main routes, so what is a, what we would consider a heavy truck, um, these are just some examples, um, that would be acceptable to go on any street in the county, these are not the ones we would be limited, although some of them are getting close to that limit, and obviously, light-duty trucks, um, pickup trucks, sedans were definitely not being issued, but, um, I'm going to make note on two items, the bottom two slides on the bottom of the page, um, they both have single axles in the rear, you see one set of tires essentially, um, that's kind of a rule of thumb you might want to look at about what considers a heavy truck, in contrast to the next slide about trucks not acceptable, you would see kind of the similar one on the bottom left, it has a tandem axle in the back, and once you start outfitting tandem axles, the trucks have much more capacity, um, and that's where it kind of pushes it over its limit of thirty-six thousand pounds, I will also note too, the bottom right one, um, it's a combination, it's either the gross weight of the vehicle itself, um, or it could be a combination if there's a trailer involved too, um, in this situation, that bottom right one, the small dump truck can go on any road in the county, but as soon as you start pulling a heavier trailer like that, the combinations of theirs go over your, your limit, so it could be a combination of stuff, and obviously, the, the poster child is in the top right, the, the semi-truck with the big trailer in the back, so if this would be something the county would consider, how would we sign it, um, Gwinnett County uses the sign on the left, that's your national standard sign for no trucks, um, the sign on the right, Gwinnett County does not use, is of interesting note, um, they choose not to designate their routes as a truck route, they just sign, and I'll get to on, on a next slide about where they position these signs, um, for, for reference, what we're looking at, I know from, um, Community Development's initiative about some of their signs in the neighborhood for the residents, size matters, this would be one-size sign, sorry, you can't really see it on, on the Zoom call, but that's a thirty-inch by thirty-inch sign, it is not one, it's usually, this is bigger than what we usually put on a residential street, and this is a thirty-six by thirty-six sign, three feet by three feet, and obviously, the intent is to grab attention of the trucks that you're about ready to turn on a street where we don't want you, um, if you wanted to go with the permitted sign, that is the size of the sign, pretty prominent, um, at least right here, of course, when you get on the road, they have a tendency to look smaller, but it's a sizable sign, um, telling trucks you're on a designated route, now, I, I will say this, um, the, the way you sign roads is nationally built on driver expectation and consistency through different jurisdictions, whether it's in Clayton County, Georgia, or Anchorage, Alaska, they want a stop sign to look the same, have the same meaning, all the way down to these regulatory signs, um, when we start talking about truck routes, where we want to put these signs, obviously, you have a lot of state routes within our county, um, this, the state D R T by practice do not sign their individual state routes as truck-friendly, as a truck route designation, so if we want to go this way, one of the things we need to be mindful of is if we would like to put that on our streets, we might not be able to put it on the state routes within our county to get consistency, um, it's just a nuance there I wanted to point out before we run and say, oh, I really like that sign, just put it everywhere, is it might not be applicable since we can't control the state routes, now, where would we put these, this is an example intersection, um, it's a state route, four-lane divided highway, um, the yellow markings on the side is to emulate a potential sign location, one of the things that, um, of note that Gwinnett County does not do is they do not sign the no truck signs in front of a subdivision, um, it's just a practice they've gotten to, um, I, I would surmise maybe there is a marquee sign out there, it might detract from the aesthetic appearance of the entrance to the subdivision, um, and that's something we, we could do, we could not do, um, what we've, when we started looking at this, what we learned really quick is we might have a standard footprint of where we would say to put these signs, but each intersection, each location is, is site-specific, so we would have to go out there and kind of locate each sign to make sure it's as visible as possible, um, depending on the angles of how the roads come together and how much more stuff is out there, um, so this is a kind of an idealistic approach of how to do it, but the realistic, realistic side of things is each intersection would have to be looked at individually to try to position the signs so they would have maximum effect, the idea is if this is a state route, we would try to locate the sign essentially on the right-of-way line, uh, anything within the right-of-way, I would formally have to go to Georgia D R T and get a permit for, um, again, whether or not they would permit me for something that they don't consider standard on their roads, we would have to tackle, um, but in most of these situations, as you can see, whether you're turning right or left off of the main road, on, onto a side road, you should be able to see that before you make your turn and, and be able to change your direction. Okay, the next thing would be what streets, and I, I realize that's pretty small, this is a little bigger, the blue are Georgia D R T routes, interstates are state routes, as you can see, we, we benefit a lot, in the county for having a, a pretty dense state route network, so the blue ones are ones that you really don't have anything to do with because they're state routes, and we drew them where they go through the city so you can see connectivity, if you would be, um, open in considering of a truck route thing, our proposal would be the orange routes, or be county-controlled roads, some of them you might notice kind of stop when you get to a city limit, of course, because we can't control what's in the city limit, but these will be the ones that we feel have value to, uh, at least on initial swipe, to allow trucks, they have the, the size, the capacity, the width, um, throughout majority of the road to, to facilitate a truck movement, um, and like I said, there's a lot of roads, a little side streets here and there that have warehouses and trucking facilities that this will impact, um, they can still get to and from their sites and get back on the main roads and do their business, um, and of note, the green is a, what I would consider a future route, once it's improved, as y'all know, the, our Bowery Creek, Mount Zion Boulevard widening project should be starting next year, and once completed, that will be a, a substantial four-lane, uh, facility in the heart of the county, and that would be able to, to function, functionally carry truck traffic of this nature, so, um, that's, that's a, a quick overview of what we would be looking at, um, legal has a draft, um, ordinance that, um, is highly based off of Gwinnett County, um, there, there's, I'm sure Chuck can speak to it, it's pretty simplistic in form, um, referencing state routes and our ability to, to control our own roads, and it, it lists the, the road names and the to and from, um, and then we would effort to obviously have a map on the county's website prominently accessible, and then, um, hopefully the word will get out to some of the trucking agencies, and, um, we've had limited effects in the past experience trying to. And we've had limited effects in the past experience trying to contact Google directly and on their directing on street connectivity. So time will get this message out where trucks are designated to travel in the county.
All right. Let me ask this quick question. In reference to your proposed routes, do we know how many signs will be needed and what the cost will be?
We, we initially looked at it countywide. Because while I don't want to get into a situation where we have to go sign every street. I mean, you're talking at least half a million dollars on that. What we're looking at in this scenario is, on a typical four lane intersection, four roadway, is four signs on the corner. We have not priced that out specifically, but I'm, I'm pretty confident we should be able to absorb it into our current funding mechanism for our signing operation. Depending on how many roads we're talking about, you're, you're talking a couple of months' effort on my staff to get it out there. And a lot depends too, if you want to do the green sign, what designates the route, if that's something you're interested in too. But I don't think it's anything overwhelming for us at this stage.
Questions?
I do have one. Great presentation. Would this be a exercise which would be best fit with including our cities and municipalities in? Since some of these roads would be overlaying?
It, it could be. It could be, especially the ones where we connect to. There, there's only a handful of them. As you, have you noticed, I did put a bunch of proposed ones that would be going in directions I don't think you want to go into. But there's certain ones that I think it would be beneficial to have a conversation.
And to me, this would begin to bring on some consistency, consistency throughout the county. Just thought.
Forest Parkway is a great example of how it goes into Lake City. That would be a very prominent one. I think they, they would be more than apt to, to support. And we definitely, through the service delivery agreement, we could probably work a relationship with them to help support them in any signage needs they might need. It gets a little bit more interesting or hairy when you get to the county borders, dealing with other county jurisdictions. And obviously, some people have different perspectives on what their roads are used for compared to ours. So.
Understand. Thank you.
Any other questions? Commissioner?
Yes, sir. First of all, thank you, Mr. Matarco. This is great work. And it kind of piggybacks on what Commissioner Davis just asked about collaborating. But my question is more so, is there opportunity for us to be able to include this in maybe our safe routes to schools or just our entire pedestrian safety plan that could be included with some of the plans we've already submitted? The reason I'm asking this is because a lot of times we think we have to shoulder the cost of such initiative on our own or even with other jurisdictions. But what we're basically and essentially talking about is making our roads safer. And so these efforts, as opposed to doing them, which you've already gotten a big lift, in isolation, is there an opportunity to be able to nestle this initiative within, like per se, it may be a big reach, but with the opportunity we just got through, I think it was Chairman of the A R C, but we just got a, a grant with them. There are grant opportunities out there, but a lot of times we have to make sure, as I stated again, that it's within a larger initiative such as safe routes, our safe pedestrian plan. And that will open the door for more funding, as opposed to us doing it on our own.
I think what you brought forward is a great idea for the future. Having a designated truck route or how we treat trucks separately would open the doors possibly for additional funds for improvements on the roads in the future. What I would suggest though, if we're looking at trying to designate routes and put signs up, if we steer clear of the grants money, it would be a much quicker, much more quality response to let us just take care of it than trying to apply for funding and have to deal with a litany of, of hoops to get through. If this type of project, as you saw right now, based off the number of roads, I mean, we could be sitting in early next year having it fully implemented. A R C, you're looking at calls for project submissions. What type of funding do you line up? It would be a possibility, but you're probably talking years compared to months on an implementation timeframe.
Okay, I hear you. Can I make just a small request? Can y'all get with like, like Commissioner said with the cities? Because I know, I got to give them props. City of Jonesboro, they tend to find money and find it rather quickly. I don't know how they do it, but I do know too, that there's funding a lot of times that is returned back simply because we don't access it. So I just want us to keep our minds open, and I do hear you about the length of time. But you know, we never know what's out there, you know? The same.
Definitely be more than willing to talk to the cities.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hambrich?
Yes. Is this something informational only? Or is this something you can expect on the regular board meeting as a resolution or something?
Well, what were we looking to do? If we, if we feel like we need further discussion on this, we can always bring back to another work session. If you like what you see, then Mr. Matarco could answer any additional questions that you may have. And if we feel comfortable as a board to move forward to taking a vote on it, then we can do that as well.
So can we expect this on next week's meeting?
Let's do this. I'm gonna have Mr. Matarco to reach out to each of you once again, just to see what your thoughts are on it. And if everybody's comfortable moving forward as he outlined, then yes, let's move forward.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You had some? Or are we not at a stage where we even want to do?
Yeah, I think Mr. Matarco's question was what was the next steps of the board? And I think y'all outlined several, one of which is look at collaborations with the cities to see whether or not there's a path forward there. And then ultimately, a resolution or whatever we need to memorialize it wouldn't be on next week's agenda.
Yeah, yeah. And I agree with that. And I appreciate you bringing that up. In addition, after you get with the commissioners and see what direction they want to go in, because we need to make sure that all of us are on board. Then next step would be to reach out to the cities and see if they would like to join in in any capacity. And then bring it back to Ms. COO, Mr. Reed, and then we'll memorialize whatever agreements we need to.
Sounds good.
All right. Everybody good with that? All right. Thank you, Mr. Matarco. All right, next up is building resilient communities and infrastructure. Chief?
I'll be reading, sir, so it will be thorough but brief.
All right. Glad you gave yourself a little leeway there.
Hey, Chief, this is Hambrich speaking. You can't be brief on this one.
Yes, ma'am. I'll only leave plenty of time for questions, so.
And we do have people, I think, in the audience from District Two and also on, on, on the Zoom that are very interested in hearing this presentation.
Okay, and I would also, hopefully she was able to make it on, Ms. Hannah Palmer, who's with Finding the Flint, is one of our partners that we're working with on this as we move forward, along with some consultants that the county already has on board. As we're working our way currently through the hazard mitigation planning process. But this is a great night to have this, this presentation as we're talking about trying to build resilient communities. We've already heard about healthcare, which is one of the major community lifelines that we're going to talk about this evening. We just finished listening about transportation, which is another huge community lifeline. So this could not be more brilliantly timed, whoever's responsible for that timing. Kudos. Kudos and hats off to you. So, but let's dive in and get started. So governments, non-governmental organizations, and community leaders in many countries face a daunting task. The design and implementation of policies, programs, and systems that help local communities cope with a monopoly of threats ranging from terrorist attacks to natural disasters. In highly developed societies, this task is often compounded by associated problems such as aged, overburdened, and complex critical infrastructure systems. From 2000 to 2020, current as of October 7th of 2020, there have been 197 weather climate disaster events with losses exceeding $1 billion each to affect the United States. These events have included 17 drought events, 21 flooding events, three freezes, 105 severe storm events, 30 tropical cyclones, 15 wildfires, and six winter storm events. In total, the U.S. South, Central, and Southeast regions experienced a higher frequency of billion-dollar disaster events than any other region in the United States. This chart shows the 20-year history of compound extremes in the state of Georgia. Example given, billion-dollar disaster events that occur at the same time or in a sequence. As noted in National Climate Assessment 2017, the physical and socioeconomic impacts of compound extreme events such as simultaneous heat and drought, wildfires associated with hot and dry conditions, or flooding associated with high precipitation on top of snow or waterlogged ground can be greater than the sum of its parts. This fact underscores the need for logical, for local governments to design and implement a local resilience assessment strategy to ensure its critical subsystems, resource robustness, and adaptive capacity are capable of withstanding a disruption. Clayton County is uniquely positioned in that it possesses two major waterways that could be a valuable source of ecotourism for the county. As shown in this graphic, the Flint River and Camp Creek play a large role in the county's ability to maintain its resilience in the face of natural and/or man-made disruptions. However, as evidenced by the blue icons on the map, the effects of development, both internal and external, along with decades of neglect, have turned these resources into major liabilities and threats to our basic ability to maintain the efficiency and effectiveness of our core services. The scrolling images represent a small snapshot of the past two years in Clayton County. The influx of severe weather events coupled with the lingering effects of internal and external influences are crippling our community and eliminating access to many critical lifelines. Over the past few months, the Office of Emergency Management, in collaboration with Commissioner Hambrich's office, the Chairman's office, and the Office of the Chief Operating Officer, have visited seven different areas of the county that have experienced recent widespread flooding coupled with substantial property damage. This does not include those repetitive loss areas, such as Southern Regional Medical Center, that place our community at risk. While this has been our past and is currently our present, it certainly does not have to be our future. In collaboration with the Office of the COO, the Emergency Management Agency is beginning to shift the focus from a reactionary response to a disruption or disaster to one of building resilience within the county to prevent the disruption from occurring. The idea of building resilience to natural and man-made disasters is now a dominant strategic theme and operational goal in the current U.S. national security policy. Governments, communities, and individuals have never been so devastatingly unprepared to cope with disturbances to infrastructure, vital resources, or public goods and services. Part of the problem is that the efficiencies inherent within these complex systems of modern life reduce resilience through a loss in redundancy and diversity. Another aspect is that few communities, systems, facilities, policies, or processes are designed with resilience as a specification. The ability of these systems to bounce back after a disaster will have a direct impact on the ability of a community to respond and recover. It is thus important to consider all the resources that a community must count on when assessing resilience. A lifeline enables the continuous operation of critical government and business functions and is essential to human health, safety, or economic security. Clayton County 2040 seeks to create a community resilient, seeks to create community resilience by aligning performance, critical infrastructure, and key resource management with a shared vision of merging this construct with the strategic pillars of the Board of Commissioners. These community lifelines represent the most fundamental services in the community that, when stabilized, enable all other aspects of society to function. When coupled with critical infrastructure, key resource, and performance management, they create an integrated network of assets, services, and capabilities that are used day to day to support the recurring needs of our community. As shown on this slide, community lifelines are representative of the core pillars a community must have to be economically and socially viable. The community lifeline's concept signals a transformation in the thinking around best practices to prepare a community for resilience. Communities must begin to assess critical infrastructure, policy, performance, and emergency preparedness through the seven community lifelines, as opposed to the more traditional 32 core capabilities as a standard model for assessing resilience of their community. However, the community lifelines more appropriately identify the core pillars for supporting community resilience in a way that is common to all phases of the emergency management cycle. Therefore, integrating community lifelines into preparedness practice will help reduce and simplify the capabilities that communities focus on building. The framework, concepts, and metrics behind the community lifeline's construct aligns perfectly with the strategic pillars of the Board of Commissioners to create a shared vision of preparing Clayton County by introducing an accessible, familiar, and common language that can improve coordination between typical emergency management partners and fuse them with newer partners at all levels of government. This is accomplished by evaluating the established priorities of the Board of Commissioners, existing policy, proposed policy, and the construction or renovation of critical infrastructure in an effort to determine the county's level of resilience by measuring our resource robustness and adaptive capacity. Resources are critical to a community's sustained functioning and provision of public services under a variety of conditions, both in times of normalcy or in crisis. Communities can evaluate the robustness of their resources by looking at the performance, diversity, and redundancy of what is available to them. A community's adaptive capacity is a function of the ability of individuals and groups to, one, store and remember experiences; two, use that memory and experience to learn, innovate, and reorganize resources in order to adapt to changing environmental demands; and, three, connect with others inside and outside the community to communicate experiences and lessons learned, self-organize or reorganize in the absence of direction, or to obtain resources from outside sources. Thus, institutional memory, innovative learning, and connectedness determine the foundation of adaptive capacity on a community level. In order to help think about resilience in our community, our approach employs the concepts described above to assess each one of the five key community subsystems: ecological, economic, civil society, governance, and physical infrastructure. The critical elements of a local resilient assessment include an unflinching look at the five subsystems as they really are and a willingness to see possibilities for putting resources together in new ways in the event of a disruption. At a minimum, a comprehensive community resilience assessment would entail an examination across each of the five subsystems that make up the community. So how do we accomplish the task? Accurate through July 16th of 2020, this slide details the amount of funding that has been made available through FEMA for programs and projects aimed at implementing a new paradigm of community resilience. The simple truth is, you have already taken the initial steps of ushering in a new era in preparing Clayton County for the future. At the October 20th Board of Commissioners meeting, this board took decisive action through Resolutions 2020-196, 2020-197, and 2020-200, which amended the current Hazard Mitigation Plan to include specific focal points, as well as authorize the Office of Emergency Management to seek funding to begin the process of creating a resilient Clayton County. Let's take a look at what it means to be a resilient community and how we can create resiliency while improving our ecological, economical, civil, and physical infrastructure subsystems. Pictured here is the most recent flooding event on Upper Riverdale Road at Garden Walk Boulevard a couple hours after the water started to recede. Serving as a major artery for both public and private access to our east-west corridors, I-75, and critical access to Southern Regional Medical Center for the eastern half of the county, this road was closed for nearly eight hours. This one location affected the following community lifelines for an eight-hour period, destabilizing the county's ability to meet the needs of our citizens. In addition, the downstream effect of both the flooding event as well as the strain on public safety resources caused further disruption. Clayton 2040 seeks to eliminate these events by partnering with like-minded agencies such as Finding the Flint, the Clayton County Water Authority, the Atlanta Regional Commission, the Department of Natural Resources, and many others to create projects that will reshape our community into one that can flourish and thrive even in the face of adversity. By doing so, we can simply turn this into this. There are several areas within this space that turn a barren marsh into a site for ecotourism, health and wellness, and agricultural activities aimed at producing community gardens to help stabilize the food supply in the county. This is done while eliminating a flooding issue that has plagued this county for at least the last decade. Finally, it brings a fresh start, a fresh start to an area deemed a medical overlayed. Finally, it brings a fresh start to an area deemed a medical overlay district by the Board of Commissioners a few years ago and helps bring much-needed support to Southern Regional Medical Center. This is a concept thought of and produced by Finding the Flint but is a representation of what can happen when we enhance our collaboration and reshape our vision for Clayton County in 2040. Thank you very much, and I'm ready for any questions, sir.
Thank you. Any questions for the chief?
Yes, chief. This is Hambrick. How will this help, or can you explain to us, and to the listeners especially District Two, which does include some of the Upper Riverdale Road, but the neighborhoods that we have visited in the last six to eight weeks? How does this help, or will this help our neighborhood?
Yes, ma'am. So when you look at creating resilience, so the concept of resilience is a county-wide concept, and what you're looking at is you're looking at the county's ability to continue to provide its core services regardless of what's going on, whether that be severe weather, whether that be flooding, whether that be freezing, whether that be a pandemic, or whether it's a compound event like severe storms, hurricanes, in the middle of a pandemic. So all of these things can create issues with resilience. The concept of a resilient Clayton County begins with dealing with those primary issues we know exist, i.e. flooding within our communities, things that sever a lot of those community lifelines for those communities, the ability to get to food and water and shelter, the ability to get to healthcare, transportation issues. All of those community lifelines that we talked about are affected in various ways. So as we're beginning to look at what creates a resilient community, the two grants that we're currently working on are specific to flood mitigation projects, which are aimed at helping the Ashland Estates, everybody up off of Camp Road, everybody over on the western part of the county, the Upper Riverdale Road corridor, not just the hospital, but the apartment complexes off of Upper Riverdale, the Mobile Home Parks down off of Museum Circle, the subdivisions that are off of Roxbury, the subdivisions that are off of North Ridge in the south end of the county, some new areas that have recently popped up up in Commissioner Gregory's district, up around Rex Road and some other areas. So as we continue to see these compounding weather events, we're staring down the face of Zeta now, which is going to once again bring these issues to light. So how does this program help those subdivisions and those affected? We start by going out, which is what we're doing, we're canvassing neighborhoods, we're walking neighborhoods, we're finding where the issues are, where are the pinch points that's causing these flooding events, and we go seek ways to mitigate them so we don't have these issues again. That may be through grant funding through FEMA. It may be through grant funding from Department of Natural Resources, through Department of Community Affairs, it can be through collaborative partnerships with corporate sponsors as you start looking at some of our main thoroughfares up and down the Flint. You start getting next to Hartsfield, the impact of Hartsfield on the Flint. You start looking at Areopopolis, you start looking at some of the other developments, and you start to build these projects that create resilience within the county. So if we have another Hurricane Zeta that comes through like we're facing on Wednesday night into Thursday, I don't have to worry about Upper Riverdale going underwater and shutting off access to the hospital. We don't have to worry about residents' homes flooding because we've looked at the county through the lens of the county being resilient, being able to withstand a disruption regardless of what it is, and then quickly recover. So it's a comprehensive look that looks at much more than just flooding. Right now, flooding is the focal point that kicked this entire program off and is getting us to change it. And as you begin to look at federal funding that's coming down, this is the new standard for federal funding. Most of your best practices for mitigation projects all require you to detail what community lifelines it addresses, what proportion of your population does it address, who stands to benefit from it, whether that's not only the seven community lifelines, but corporate businesses, private businesses, you know, so there's, it has to be a holistic approach when we start to look at it. So not only will what we're doing now in the very early stages of this benefit District Two, District Three, District One, where we know those high-flooding areas are, but it will benefit the county as a whole.
Can you give us some kind of timeline because even this evening, well, this afternoon, when a couple of the residents I know from the Shaver Lot subdivision and Ms. Lumpkin over off of the Regency Place area, that other end of the Cedar Woods, they are asking, what is it that the county can do? You know, because a lot of them are fearful, people this week, what, Wednesday, Thursday, I think, predicted rainfall, flooding, and that kind of thing. So do we have something in place, or will we be putting something in place, say maybe the end of this year, next year, to apply for some of this money so we can perhaps help folk, you know, that need help immediately? Or how soon can we expect something to come out of this?
Yes, ma'am. So the consultant that we have under contract now, Wood Environmental, is helping us with the rewrite and reapproval of the county's Hazard Mitigation Plan. As part of this process, as part of establishing kind of a new paradigm of how we're looking at these events in the county, the COO had me get with Wood to look at an expanded scope of work to help us develop what these plans need to look like. There's a couple of plans that are already out there that the Water Authority had done three or four years ago that we've gotten our hands on, and we're looking at those and we're assessing those. Part of answering your question is what can the county do in the immediacy? That's what we're trying to figure out. So in order for us to do that, we have to go look at these plans, find the areas that are causing these disruptions, understand who owns that land, and then kind of understand what that problem is and what's the best way to fix it. Because as you saw, Commissioner, when we walked the neighborhood the other night, you can't just look at one particular street, fix that area, because the minute you increase flow off one street, you've worsened flow four streets down. So it has to be a holistic approach to this event, and that's part of the issue that we're running into is, historically speaking, we have not looked at it in that way. So we, you know, a subdivision gets built, like up off of Camp, a lot of that issue is created by a subdivision that's not in Clayton County. So a lot of that stormwater discharge enters the county, there's a nice big four-and-a-half-foot culvert there, but once it gets out of there, it has nowhere to go. So if we go in and we just clean up that one-hundred-foot section of creek bed, then we just created an even bigger issue further downstream. So it just continues to compound itself. So what is the county doing? The county is doing all we can do, and we are moving at speeds that we simply haven't moved before to try and figure out what is causing these issues. Me and my staff, who is here tonight out of EMA, have walked probably more creek bed in the last two months than we have in the twenty-five years I've been in service to this community. So the simple answer is, on a timeline, we will apply for every grant that we can uncover and seek to get that funding, and once I understand what the county can do in the meantime, then that report will come to the COO, and I'm quite sure it will make it to y'all for consideration. I had a conversation with Director of GK today about some HUD funding I didn't know existed, he dug into it and got me the answers I needed. So we're leaving no stone unturned to try and remedy this issue. The problem we're facing this year is Mother Nature just won't leave us alone long enough to get it done.
Okay, and you touched on something too regarding some of these projects that have been built out over the years, especially, I think, the Fulton County area, which affects, I think, Ashland Estates and some others. I hope that we can prevent some of the things that were done in the past as far as subdivisions being built or other things being built that affect some of our places or some of our neighborhoods that are already in place. Because each one of those neighborhoods that we have visited over the last two months, that's what, you know, I think you were hearing that same thing too, that we were okay twelve, fifteen years ago, but when they build this, or when they start doing this at the apple, or when they did different things, that this affected the neighborhoods. And also hopefully in the future, we can get together, I guess, maybe zoning, U, water, T and D, and all, and look at these things and see how we can possibly prevent those. As a matter of fact, I'll be in touch with you all this week because I have a proposed project coming up off of Creole Road that I want you all to look at because they're saying flood clean behind that. But anyway, we get together on that, but right now, I would like for us to, you know, concentrate like you put now on these areas that, and I know, you know, people in Shaver Lot, Ashland, I think Oxford, and, you know, the same places are gonna have some problems. Probably Thursday, as early as Thursday, rather, and if we can say, you know, hey, right now, we're gonna concentrate on January of 2021 applying, or maybe December of 2020, applying for this grant or whatever, or we get with Mr. E.G.K., and if there's some kind of remedy or some starting point that we can help some of these residents have, and I know, I mean, I just hate to name somebody straight up, but I know right in Shaver Lot, you know, a lot of those houses we saw when we were there two weeks ago, you know, are built right on that flood plain. And also, I know they're seeking some kind of relief, and hopefully that can come from the county sooner than later.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Not so much a question, and I know this is definitely something that is hitting Commissioner Hambrick's area, but as the chief said, it affects our entire county, and I'm just brainstorming here. This is a heavy lift, and I'm glad that you've identified some funding, but once again, I'm always trying to find ways of a possibility to connect the dots. Number one, chief, great presentation. Number two, so glad that you've included Hannah because she's a resource that I've always said that we definitely need to tap into a little bit more with her level of connectivity. But as you were talking about the lifelines and so forth, this is affecting also our economic status in that area. So I'm thinking that, I guess it's a question, have we approached our state legislature so that they can take this concern and, I guess, put it into a place where they can think through it in one of their committees? Because as you all have stated, if our issues are coming from other counties, then it would require us to get our representatives involved to possibly have some of the legislation put forth so that it will require that when a subdivision is being built so close to the line, that it must include the adjacent jurisdiction before approval. But obviously, we have no bearing on another jurisdiction, but they can do it from a state level. Have there been discussions surrounding that opportunity or possibility?
Yes, ma'am. So where we are in that process is the COO and I are beginning to identify what those areas are, what those specific projects are, what the specific causes of those impacts to our community are, and this doesn't just include residential, we're looking at previous commercial development that's been done, and we're looking at a lot of different areas. One of the things the COO has tasked me with is, as, you know, these requests come in, I go out and look at them, we dealt with one down in your district down off of Panhandle Road, you know, that was ultimately the result of a subdivision built in Fayette County. This residence property just happens to back up to the Fayette County line, but that entire subdivision is in Fayette. There's kind of some issues there that are contributing to that. So one of the things that we want to do, and I want to make sure we do before I turn that list over to the COO, and I'm keeping him well apprised of what we're finding and what my inspection shows and kind of what our research shows, is we want to make sure we understand what we're talking about before we go ask our state legislation to go address that for us. We want to make sure that we can back up the things that we're saying have or have not been done, and then we want to be able to bring them a comprehensive solution as well that's rooted in these best practices, i.e. community resilience, community lifelines, and just building sound infrastructure so that when they go start to have those conversations, we don't walk them into a left hook or a buzzsaw because we got a little too anxious to jump out there. So myself and the COO have had those conversations, he's given me very clear directions on what he expects from me so that he can bring that information to you all, and then let's go have that conversation with our elected leadership.
Okay, who is "we" real quick? Is it just our county folks? Because have we already pulled in the ARC or Department of Community Affairs so they can come? We have representatives that can already come, so that way we have more folks thinking at the table?
Yeah. Let me chime in right there, Commissioner. Also, through the ARC, there is a partnership there through the Metro Water Committee.
Oh, they're in there?
Yes, and they look at ways of mitigating the effects or impacts that the Flint has within the metro Atlanta area. So that is another committee that they probably can draw us more resources and information from. So, but yes, and that has all of the metro Atlanta partners and communities involved in it.
Well, and thank you, sir, for that, but then to try and streamline this communication is, you know, we let the Water Authority do what the Water Authority does, and we leverage the Water Authority and their connections and their contacts to help us as our stormwater management. I'm looking at this from the county impact, from an emergency management, from a resilience, from an infrastructure standpoint, and we're compiling, like I said, this list of areas. So all of these folk that we're all talking about are involved. We're just trying to involve them at the appropriate level at this point so we make sure that once we go to eat this elephant, we do it appropriately so it gets done in the most efficient manner for our citizens.
Yeah, and I appreciate that approach. Of course, we're gonna take care of Clayton County first and foremost.
Absolutely.
But when you look at the Flint and the flooding that comes down, you know, Flint goes a long way. So if some of the flooding could be mitigated in North Atlanta, then possibly it would not come all the way down to Clayton County because it flows southward, so.
Yes, sir. The headwaters are just north of Hartsfield, and the vast majority of the influx comes from off of the impervious surface at Hartsfield, and then it's, as they say, it's all downhill from there.
There you go. Any other questions?
Unfortunately, a lot of our downhill is flat right now.
Let me say this publicly, COO, Chief Mayor, Chief Roberts, Community Development, and the Water Authority, I hope I'm not giving anybody out, but I really appreciate you all because you all have been, I mean, really working on this, I call you sometimes last minute, you know, we're gonna meet over at Shaver Lot, we're gonna meet over at Ashland, we're gonna meet at Oxford, you know, and you all have been there and talking to the residents, and I really appreciate that. So please, let's keep those lines of communication open as much as possible because, you know, people are, you know, making repairs, and then another one comes, and, you know, it messes up things again, and also I want us to continue that openness and, you know, keep us informed, so we can keep them informed of what's going on and what steps we have taken and that we are not forgetting. You know, I know the businesses and all too, they're not forgetting our citizens, our residents too. So thank you all, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hambrick. All right. Thank you, sir. I appreciate the presentation. Our last presentation for the day is extensive services housing program transition. Mr. E.G.K.
Chairman, Vice Commissioners, good evening.
Thought it was just me.
It's called old age. Good evening again. I come to you this evening to present an idea that started in Extension Services. It's the transition of housing services and the Extension Services to come over to our HUD Division in Community Development. That discussion came about as an operational discussion within Extension Services in their effort to realign their mandate and direction from UGA. And so, as that discussion started, with the department head and the CEO, we had a discussion, and the discussion largely is to move the housing services in the Extension area, the Extension Services, into HUD Department in Community Development. And I'm giving you this as a background before I get into what you see on the slide. Those positions and functions that are being moved into Community Development have been funded by Community Development. So it's just people changing their playing fields. They are read one of the salary rates, they are reads a partial where it comes from general fund, and the rest of it comes from HUD funding. So in terms of the funding aspect of the program, most of it is being supplied or being funded through HUD programs. So... So for all intents and purposes, it's a change in supervision hierarchy really and, um, and also to improve those direct services. COVID showed us something that regardless of the funds that we are given to sub recipients and how they're operating, that sometimes when folks call the county, there is a level of comfort that they get instead of calling, um, um, uh, a sub recipient, a, um, a nonprofit. The function we're gonna start deliver is almost twenty-four seven. And, um, I've explained that to staff. That means that when someone is having an issue and they call, we have to be on and address it, um, as much as we can. So having kind of give, given you a background as to how this came about. We went ahead and, um, laid out how it could happen. And that's what you're seeing on the slide. Um, what we are looking at building out is four program areas. Housing counseling, down payment assistance for first time home buyers, tenant based rental assistance, and homeless prevention. Those functions are actually part and parcel of what we do anyway. So those are the four, the core, the four core areas that we're gonna be offering. Implementation timeline given based on the discussion we had with, um, the Director of Extension Services. That's why you see, and that implementation timeline lies solely on what you, the board, decide to do. That's why you see the first today, ten twenty-seven for the work session. And the plan will be, if it's a go, then you'll probably see it, um, uh, sometime in November. Um, so, but what we'll do is, uh, because it's HUD, we have a contract at the Extension Services that we have to amend because it's a contract. When they come to Community Development Department, given HUD regulations, we have to amend it and bring it in-house. So that's why you're seeing advertised for fifteen days, which is what we do for public comment. Submit and allow to B O C to consider this, um, initiative. And after the hearing, then transmit B O C approval to HUD. Because while we are doing this, once I get the go ahead, that this is a go. We still need to inform HUD of what we're doing because they always abreast of what we are. They like to be abreast of what we are doing. Um, B is to create a unit to bring this inside and make it effective. Because bringing it inside is one thing, making it effective is another and efficient. We create a new unit in HUD that will be called Housing, uh, Housing Direct Services. That's what they're focusing on, Housing Direct Services. Both rental assistant, um, down payment assistant, as you know, is if we want to encourage as many people as possible in our community to own homes. Everybody knows owning home helps us collecting property tax. So we want to do that and, um, also, uh, the folks who live in apartments, we get calls a lot a day, people looking for assistance for cause of COVID. So we understand what that is. Um, so that's the kind of timeline we want to follow. We create this unit inside of the HUD division to be headed, um, uh, by our HUD HUD Programs Manager to supervise that group also. And, uh, see its positions and fund sources. They are read, um, those positions are existing really. Nothing is being created. It's something that exists that just, like, um, analogy I, I used before, changing playing fields. We have a program coordinator. We have one housing counselor, uh, contract staff, and admin support. So those are coming over. Then in terms of, um, actual workspace, where are they gonna be located? Right now they are read and understanding and agree, and a, an agreement for them to still stay where they are being housed at the Extension Services for right now. Um, we do have, uh, as you know, the tax assessor have vacated the second floor in the Annex Two Court Building. Um, hopefully we'll get into renovating, doing some things to it. Then they will, the whole HUD program and this program, we relocate to the Annex Two Building. That's the plan. The, um, O C chart that you see is an operational O C chart as to how we're incorporating it into that division to function. Again, it's, um, the only fund that's coming out of general fund is the one that had been coming out of it to supplement one of the salaries. But HUD funds will take care of the rest of it. So in a nutshell, that is really, uh, what we are thinking and, um, trying to get, um, your feedback.
All right, appreciate your presentation. So again, just to reiterate what I heard is that there's no additional personnel, only location change.
Yes.
Funds that are, are the items that are already being funded by the B O C or the county will continue and everything else will remain with, um, HUD, through HUD.
Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, uh, Ms. Hardeman is also here if she wants to, um, if he would like her to speak any about this.
Good, uh, good evening, Ms. Hardeman. Is there anything you would like to interject? You on mute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. Good evening, Chairman Turner and Commissioners. Um, so I don't want to take up too much of your time, but I just want to state that, um, you know, extension's been around for over a hundred years. We've been working hard trying to educate our communities. Um, and since I've been in my position, the housing program in our office has just, um, grown tremendously and that's only due to the work, um, of Ms. Akilah Ford and her wonderful staff, her supervision and her guidance. Um, and so they're not only continuing the work that they have already been doing, but they've increased that to, Mr. G K talked about the down payment assistance programming. They've been, um, able to provide funding to those who are affected by COVID. Um, and so while these are a great benefit to our county, there are limita- limitations to what I can provide to them as far as supervision and guidance as a faculty member with U G A. And so I wanted to make sure, and I approached, um, COO Stanford and as well as Mr. G K, I want to make sure that they get what they need so that they can keep excelling. I don't want my, um, limited resources to be able to hold them back because they have been doing tremendous work and it's only going up. So, um, I want to make sure that they're gonna get what they need and this is the best plan that we've been able to come up with so that they can, can have that support.
Okay, just for my clarification, um, you worked with COO, Mr. E G K, on this reorg structure and your support of it?
Yes, I originally, um, approached Mr. Uh, COO Stanford maybe a couple of months ago because of frustrations that I heard from the housing staff on, um, their ability to get things moving and working. And a lot of it is because of the, um, communication that could have done a lot better if they were a little bit closer and proximity to the groups that they work with. And because I don't have access to a lot of that information, I was, I was limited in what I could do. Um, so I definitely brought it and asked for some guidance on how I could help them.
Okay, thank you.
Can you expound the proximity? I'm a little lost on that. You said that.
Well, it, you know, Ms. Ford is always great about when she has, um, any limitations or if she is struggling with anything, she'll bring it to me and then I would then go and bring it to someone else who sometimes brings it to someone else. This transition would allow her to be able to be right there with the people who have the answers. Um, she would not have to, um, come through because right now she's supervised by the University of Georgia. And so she would not have to come through this supervision to be able to get the resources and the help that she needs.
Okay, because it would be housed under HUD, is that what you're saying?
It would be housed with community development, correct.
It, it's under HUD now already.
Right. So it, it's just, it's under HUD right now. This is just a transition from, um, being supervised by Cooperative Extension over to being supervised by community development. When the housing programming started years ago, um, during the crisis, um, it was education based. And so Ms. Akilah Ford and many other people were able to provide education and financial literacy, credit, um, information, and it has transformed since then into a much bigger, um, entity where they're able to, um, distribute funding for those who may need rental assistance, those who are homeless, emergency housing, um, and those are things that are not, um, part of the mission of Cooperative Extension.
I understand. Um, I think, I don't know if anybody else needs it, but I, I would like to, um, spend some time really understanding the relationship of, um, HUD, which I've been studying, but I, I think I need to go back over to like the Mall Road area. I, I don't have a clear understanding of what they do in that location because when you said proximity and I hear that we're gonna put them in the Old Courthouse, I'm like, well, I've never thought of folks with HUD over at Old Courthouse other than just community development. Every time I go to Mall Road, that's where I always see all of the trucks for the, uh, housing authorities. So I just, I think I need to have a better understanding. Commissioner, I would love to, um, to continue this conversation offline, not tonight.
Okay.
That's just me.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I do have.
I have a question, but I have a comment. Uh, I'm glad to see this changed, you know, I'm sure you, because we rely on, um, the HUD office a lot, you know, without the constituents that call and contact us. So if this is gonna make things expedited faster and, and, and more information and all that because this is gonna make it better, I'm for it.
I do have.
Totally agree.
All right, uh, Mr. Davis.
I do have one and it kind of goes back to what they're saying. Is moving, I guess the process is overturned to you. Will that help speed them up in any way or be more efficient? And two, will that assist our constituents in getting service a little bit faster?
It will do all of the above, partly because they, uh, uh, for starters, they don't have to apply for anything. They are in the department. The program, once we get into this, we'll design a program. Uh, they are doing great job. We just, um, add it to what we're sending to HUD. So during the application season, they don't need to apply. If something is happening and adjustments needs to be done to what they are doing, it's most faster to do and we get to, uh, see it early. One of the things that, uh, Director Hardeman was discussing, the supervisory lines has to go through U G A before it comes down to the county. A, 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 but now it doesn't because the folks who are, who will be supervising it, by the way, Chairman, if you'll allow me before I finish, I'll ask them to stand up so you see who they are. Um, so on the supervisory level, things are working much faster.
It'll be streamlined, everything.
Yeah, everything is streamlined, it's working much faster. So in terms of our citizens, when they call, even they have a more direct access to us. Um, as we develop this program to where I think it's going to be and share that with, uh, COO, there's a lot more to this to helping our citizen that we planned.
And, and one more, what about financial compliance? As far as the compliance unit or program or how it's being handled?
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, Chairman, if you don't mind, let me introduce the folks who, who are gonna be here. Um, Chairman Staley, would you please stand? This is our HUD compliance officer, uh, financial compliance officer. The HUD, HUD programs required by law, by regulation, that we have a financial compliance officer.
Right.
And, um, Ms. Boswood, there's the HUD Programs Manager. Who's gonna be, who has been overseeing all this?
Step to the side so, so the Commissioners can see it.
Who has been overseeing all this? And Ms. Akilah Ford, who is gonna be the program over, uh, overs, uh, or, um, the program coordinator over the half, the new combined housing that's initiated.
All right. It's a pleasure. All right. Any other questions for Mr. E G K?
How would the Housing Authority been in all of this, or did they not play a role at all?
They play.
And is it best practice for it to be this way?
Uh, yet it's best practice. Housing Authority funding mechanism is not HUD. Two different funding mechanisms. Uh, the county gets this money as what is called a guarantee. There are certain, um, governmental requirements that we must meet to get this. But we do cooperate and coordinate with the Housing Authority. So, um, uh, and we do learn some things from them also. So, um, the history has shown that in the past, we did, um, coordinate with them and, um, we'll continue to do that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you, sir, for your presentation.
Thank you, sir.
And if there's no other business other than, uh, as always distressed, November third is fastly approaching down to one week. Advance voting is still happening. Please, 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 go vote. Tell everybody in your family, your relatives, your cousins, your neighbors, go vote. It's just that important if you.
And we have a dog park opening, a bark park, and it's a dog costume party. And it's gonna be, um, at the Gerald Matthews Complex. It's actually Parks and Recreation, let me be specific. It's just located at the Gerald Matthews Complex in District Three. And, um, I just felt like since COVID has messed up Halloween for so many of the young people, um, why not come out with our little pooches and have a good time and dress them up?
Any other announcements?
We should bring our grand dog.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes, you mentioned that about the voting and will you please, um, reiterate that there will be no weekend voting, no Saturday, Sunday voting? The thirtieth Friday is the last day for the early or advanced voting, for people who understand that.
Well, you just said it, uh, Commissioner Hamburg. So thank you for, uh, bringing that to, uh, everybody's attention, Friday's last day. And after Friday, November third, so a lot of people are voting. So let me say, if you go to the polls November third and the lines are long, please pack your patience. The staff are doing the best that they can and please do not leave because your vote counts. You do matter and if you leave the poll, your vote will just be wasted. And too many people fought and died for all of us to have the right to vote, so please.
And can you reiterate that change of locations to chairman of the vote we took at five twenty?
Yeah, um, we, earlier we voted on a change. We were going to have a early voting site at Lake Spivey Recreation Center. Lake Spivey Recreation Center is not ready to be open. So therefore it's, we, we voted to move it to the Charlie Griswell Singer Center, also out at the International Park. So please, make sure you go to our website, Clayton County G A, go to Elections Department, look at all the sites, all the drop boxes, educate yourself as to who is up for election and vote it conscious. All right.
Okay, now, Chairman, let me ask you this. So now is the Charlie Griswell only for the November third voting or can they vote the last couple of days, advance voting at that location?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, they will be able to vote for the last couple of days, um, at that location, advance voting.
Advance, advance voting.
Yes, ma'am, yes. Any other questions about the voting?
Yeah, I was supposed to say that so far, I mean, I'm all different social media and I think it's about five that I checked. Um, I've just been receiving good compliments from the, um, the process. Everybody's understanding that it's slow and the first day, it was the first day.
Yeah, absolutely, girl.
First day is, okay.
Absolutely.
Really, overall, I have been hearing great compliments and I mean, I've, I've had some horrible phone calls from, you know, primary elections and so forth, but with this big election, people have really been complimenting, um, And with this big election, people have really been complimenting, um, just going voting and so forth.
And, and to your.
And I asked that, you know, that's beautiful.
Yeah, and to your point, Commissioner Gregory, those problems were not only in Clayton County, but statewide and nationally. So, hey, exercise your right to vote again. I can't stress that enough. Please come out, please vote. If you can, vote early. Those lines are getting through in, in 15, 10 minutes. Uh, right now is a good time to do it. So please, please exercise your right. Any other comments, announcements? All right, hearing none, we stand adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.